Good evening. This is the Town Council Meeting, Monday, July 6, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is a reorganization meeting of the Town Council, the 46th seating of the Town Council, and we're doing it here in council chambers and also go to meeting live on our public broadcasting. Call to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town Councils being conducted via in-person as well as remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at https://www.ci.southbridge.mas.us/ as soon as we are able. First, I'd like to start with a roll call. Would you please give a roll call of the full new council?
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I am now honored to be able to turn this meeting over to our senior Town Counselor, Counselor Gus Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Manager. And could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the God of all creation, to the one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is the swearing-in of the councilors-elect with Town Clerk Matty Bonadie's. And that would be with Counselor Ryan, Counselor Dow, and myself. Just come forward, please.
Please raise your right hand, please. Do you, Joseph E. Dow solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30, 2023 faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God. Do you, Jacqueline Marie Ryan solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30, 2023 faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God. Thank you. I just need you to sign your right hand. Do you, George Steves solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30, 2023 faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God. Thank you. I just need you to sign your right hand. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all, and welcome aboard, Counselors Dow and Ryan. And item number five on this agenda is the invocation with Pastor Esteban Colosseus.
Good evening to all, and welcome to the new councilors that have been elected, to those that continue to serve. Thank you. Thank you for serving our community. As someone that has sat in your seat for five years, I can tell you one thing, I don't miss the heat in this building. But I can tell you, I am truly grateful for each and every one of your service. And I want to thank former Chairman Jovan for the opportunity to come before you, to lead you in prayer. It is a very difficult time right now that we're living in across our nation, across the world. And my prayer, honestly, is that God would lead you, God would protect you, God would open the eyes of your understanding, that you would be able to see beyond what's normal and be able to provide the services for our community as you have chosen to do. So let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, I just come before you, Lord, thanking you for these men and women that have chosen today to sacrifice time to serve your people, Father, to serve the public. And, Father, I just ask, Lord, that you be with them, Father, that you strengthen them, Lord, that you would protect their families, that you would guide their families, and, Lord, that throughout this process, Lord, of this next year, Father, that they would be men and women of character, that they would be men and women of integrity, Lord, that they would serve your people without their own interests, but rather the people's interests as they have chosen to do. Father, I pray, Lord, that you would be with them, and, Father, that they would be able to unite our community, provide for our community. And, Lord, give them peace to their families, to them, as they make many difficult decisions that lie ahead for our community. And I just thank you, Lord, for what you're going to do in their lives, for our community's life. In this, I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Pastor. Madam Secretary, could we go through roll call again, please?
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Okay. Item number seven is the election of the permanent chairperson. Do we have any nominees for chairman? Counselor Katrona.
I'd like to nominate John Jack Jovan.
Okay.
I second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for chairman? Going once? Going twice? Okay. No? I'm sorry, I'm trying to explain how to do this. Okay. In that case, then, shall we close the nominations for chairman? Shall we, I guess we roll call vote on the chair? Madam Secretary.
Counselor Daniel.
Jovan.
Counselor Katrona.
Jovan.
Counselor Dow.
Jovan.
Counselor Jovan.
Jovan.
Counselor Lazo.
Jovan.
Counselor Marquetti.
Jovan.
Counselor Ryan.
Jovan.
Counselor Steves.
Jovan.
And Counselor Adams.
Jovan.
Okay. Item number eight is election of vice chair. Counselor Lazo.
I'd like to nominate my fellow colleague and good friend, John Daniels.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominees for vice chair? Anyone? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I guess I'll close the nominations for vice chair. Madam Secretary.
Counselor Katrona.
Daniels.
Counselor Dow.
Daniel.
Counselor Jovan.
Daniel.
Counselor Lazo.
Daniels.
Counselor Marquetti.
Daniel.
Counselor Ryan.
Daniel.
Counselor Steves.
Daniel.
Counselor Adams.
Daniel.
And Counselor Daniel.
Daniel.
Okay. Item number nine is adoption of the permanent seating arrangement and newly re-elected Council Chair, Jack Jovan. Will direct this message.
Thank you for your confidence in electing me as chair of the council. Just for the public and well as my colleagues, we're in unprecedented times where it comes to COVID-19. As you can see, the dais is set up differently, our meeting area is set up differently than what we are normally accustomed to. So as we draw the numbers, the numbers for tonight's seating and throughout whatever period of time that we have to go through this process, that will be the seating of the council. However, prior to this meeting, I had met with Town Clerk Matty Bonadie's, and we already had reestablished that with whatever numbers you pick, we have it slated of what seat would be your permanent seat going forward. So even though these are temporary seating arrangements, it's already planned out about what your permanent seating arrangement would be going forward. So it is a full seating of the council planned out in advance. With one wrinkle, what we had originally had planned was going to be the chair was going to be up front and the vice chair at this table, but because we're going to have to have this hybrid council meeting of us meeting in public, and most likely, and I'll explain it later on, the public doing remotely in department heads, somebody has to moderate the computer to make sure that we have the technology correctly. So that's why I kind of switched around. So with that, I have a chair. What?
Do you want to touch that?
Yeah.
All right. Do you want that?
So seating would be whoever gets number one will be where Counselor Daniel is right now. Counselor Lazo's is now seat two, would meet, move to permanent seat three, and we'll keep a log of this. Seat four would remain the same where Counselor Ryan is. Seat five, which is vacant, would be the person who sits in in seat one would occupy seat five. So four stays where they are, one will move to five. Seat six would stay the same as well. Seat 10, which is over here where Counselor Adams is, is typically where the town attorney, we have a space saved for, would move one seat over to 11. Seat 12 would be Counsel Marquetti, whoever is in that seat would stay there. And seat 14, which is this one, would simply move to 13. But we'll keep track of it, so, okay? So we're going to have all the councils come up this way, so if we want to all get up and see, we can come right to the main area here socially distanced, of course.
Yes? That's from the sheet I got. I'll change it back, but, yeah.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you.
Now, no creeping. Counselor Adams has picked seat 14. Thank you. Counselor Katrona? Counselor Katrona has picked seat number one. Counselor Dow? Counselor Dow has picked seat number 12. Counselor Lazo? Counselor Lazo has picked seat number 15. Counselor Marquetti? Counselor Marquetti has picked seat number four. Counselor Ryan?
I'm staring.
Counselor Ryan has picked seat number six. And last but not least, Counselor Steves. Counselor Steves has picked seat number two. Thank you. One little wrinkle, I think I had one number off, but overall, I think we did well.
So thank you all, councilors, and welcome aboard. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? You know, so all present. We'll stand and adjournment for five minutes. Good evening. Welcome to the regular Town Council meeting on Monday, July 6, 2020, here in the council chambers. Again, I'll read the call to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town Council is being conducted via in-person as well as remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to review this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access, Channel 192, or by the remote information which is noted in this agenda below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.c i.southbridge.m a.us as soon as we are able to. Just for the public, you can dial in using a phone at 786-535-3211, utilizing the access Given that this is a meeting in public and all members are present, we will not have to do roll call votes because we are all present here in the chamber. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the God of all creation, to the one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
All members present. Item three, considering accept the Town Council minutes of Monday, June 29, 2020. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Katrona. Errors, corrections, omissions, or comments? Counselor Daniel.
Yes, please. On the second page, under the report, Section B, Town Manager's Search Committee, the second to the last sentence says "they are speaking" with references. That should read, instead of "they are," it should read "the search firm is."
Thank you. Any other corrections? Omissions? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Abstain.
Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Abstain.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Abstain.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
And Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Subcommittee reports. I'll go through, I don't think we had any, but we'll ask. General Government, Counsel Steves.
Haven't had any meetings, have nothing scheduled.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, was Counsel Nash, he had none scheduled. I know he had one last meeting for review of minutes and conversation, but he has not submitted those minutes as of yet, but he was going to get those to the Town Hall. We'll bring those forward as soon as the next DPW meeting is seated. Education and Human Services, Counsel Lazo.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counsel Adams, he was chair, nothing to report at this time. Thank you. Protection of Persons' Property was Counsel Manor, she did not have any meetings scheduled. I don't know if she got through all her minutes or not. I will make sure Yvonne follows up, and if anything's outstanding, we'll take that up with the new council. Curbside Advisory Committee, Counsel Adams.
He was chair through you. There's nothing really new to report. We're still waiting on some numbers from PEG for the CDPG funds for a transfer station, and that's really all I have besides cleaning up the presentation to be given to the council next month or whenever the chair chooses. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager's Search Committee, Counselor Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The next function of the Town, of the Search Committee will be to present the candidates tomorrow evening at 5:00, I believe, is the starting time for interviews by the council as a whole.
Thank you. COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Briefing, there is no additional update from the last meeting that we had. The Emergency Operations Center has been, has been operating on a part-time basis. Our next meeting is scheduled August 10, at the police station or remotely. Again, we're moving into Phase 3 of the state, so we're going to see how that went for three weeks or four weeks, and go to August 10. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, I know Chief Woodson's on the line. I don't know if he's able to talk into this, just wanted to see where our numbers were at, so the councils were aware.
Okay. Chief Woodson, are you available? We'll see if he has numbers available later on.
I can get the numbers, and I can send them out to everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman's announcement. Again, thank you, fellow councilors, for your confidence in me and serving another year as the council chairman. Last term was, to say the least, a very challenging term. I'm grateful that we're all here as the state moves into Phase 3 of the reopening plan. I think it was just time for us to get back as far as us as a public body meeting in this chamber. I think going forward, though, we have to come up with some plans for the public participation part in this, because the room as set up by the Director of Inspections would only allow for eight people to be present in the dais. So that includes department heads, any persons of the public, and really, you can't stop people from participating, so there'd be no way for us to say, okay, you can't come in, or who to determine who would come in to the meeting. So I did some research today, and part of it said, may public bodies meet in person while requiring the general public to follow the proceedings remotely? And the answer is yes, and this was from the Division of Open Government regarding open meeting questions. It's been interpreted, the governor's executive order, to permit public bodies to meet in person but provide remote access for the public. So a public body may not cap the number of attendees for the purposes of complying with the governor's order regarding gathering size and physical distancing. A small public body that typically attracts few members of the public to its meetings should not assume that it will be able to comply with the gathering size restrictions and should plan for larger audiences. The Division of Open Government encourages public bodies to continue to offer the public alternative access to the meeting through remote means, even if the public body members will assemble in person, and the meeting will be physically accessible to the public. So I believe that interpretation for that would be that we, as a public body, would meet here, and we would do, just as I've set up this evening, have people the ability to remote in and provide that remote access. So this would have to be developed through the Town Manager's Office to make sure that all the other bodies have appropriate guidance to make sure that we're complying with the law. Of course, we could go to a larger venue, but then you have the issues of the access here, right in the council chambers. We have the cable that does YouTube, Channel 192 immediately, so all this goes out immediately to the public, so they have access to the proceedings in real time by providing this computer, and that's why the chairman is sitting here right now, to be able to moderate whatever questions may arise from the public or during citizens forum that they could participate fully in the meetings as required, not only by public, open meeting law, but by our charter which allows for public participation in our meetings. So we will do our best technology-wise to make sure that the public can have a full access to our meetings. And I've asked cable and I've asked other departments that this dais will state exactly like this, that if the school committee decides to meet in here, they would follow the same and not move any microphones, because everything has been set up to appropriately sized bodies so that we could conduct the business, but when we start moving around microphones, then it messes everything up in their board inside. So please do not take any other microphones that are there. They're all set up adequately for us to participate in this meeting. Again, we have openings on boards and commissions. We mentioned this last week. The list is set in the Town, how, Town offices. We welcome anybody to come forward. At the recent town election, there was a failure to elect a school committee member and a Southbridge Housing Authority member. Those vacancies in elected town boards established under this charter shall be filled by the Town Council in joint convention with the remaining members of the respective board within 60 days unless a regular town election shall occur within 120 days, but only until the next election. So anybody that's interested in the Southbridge School Committee is one position, and Southbridge Housing Authority member, one position, please contact the Town Manager's Office, get an application in, and then we will schedule meetings jointly with those bodies to make sure that we could fill the vacancy. Welcome, Counselor Ryan, Counselor Dow, to the council. Look forward to working with you both. Based on Counsel Ryan's election to the Town Council, there is now a vacancy in the Bay Path School Committee, so we're looking to fill that. Again, that vacancy would be by joint convention of the council and the remaining member of that board, which would be the Southbridge Representative, Helen Lenty. So anybody interested in the Bay Path School Committee for a one-year term, please contact the Town Manager's Office in regards to that. I've mentioned throughout the last year-plus that there's a Charter Review Committee that, based on the charter, the Town Council shall appoint a Charter Review Committee every five years. The time is up for that Charter Review Committee. I do have the list of names that have contacted me. We've had several contact me this week, so we'll get that list of names forward, and I'll bring that up at the next, hopefully, in the next meeting for confirmation so that that Charter Review Committee could begin their work. Lastly, believe that it's incumbent on us as a council, well, two things, actually, I'm sorry, subcommittee appointments. Please get to me any subcommittees. I know a couple of councils have mentioned staying on a couple other committees that they were on, so if you wish to be on a subcommittee, please get your name to me, and we can discuss what subcommittee assignments so that we can announce that at the next council meeting as well, so that we can get the work together. I believe it is now time for subcommittees to get to work. There's no reason we can't act as subcommittees in this dais here to get the work done. There's a lot of projects ahead of us through DPW. General Government has a lot of work to do, so a lot of stuff that we kind of had tried to put on the backburn because of the meetings and trying to do it remotely, let's get back to work on the subcommittees, and we'll also have to take hard looks at budgets because the state numbers probably will be coming out pretty soon, and who knows where we're at on that. And also, as a council, I'd like to set up a working meeting as a council as a whole to discuss, I had some conversations with some residents, that brought to mind some thoughts, perhaps a working board meeting to discuss what our vision of the community should be, our citizens, and develop a blueprint for how we move forward in the future and work together to develop that. So with that, that's all I have this evening, so thank you for your time. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have any real announcements, but I did want to take this opportunity to congratulate our new council members, Counselor Dow, of an opportunity to work with you on a host of business kind of questions and concerns.[1141.12]
Thank you. Motion carries. Subcommittee reports. I'll go through this. I don't think we had any, but we'll ask. General Government, Council of Steves.
Haven't had any meetings, have nothing scheduled.
Thank you. Department of Public Works was Council Nash, he had none scheduled. I know he had one last meeting for review of minutes and conversation, but he has not submitted those minutes as of yet, but he was going to get those to the Town Hall. We'll bring those forward as soon as the next DPW meeting is seated. Education and Human Services, Council Lazo.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Council Adams, please, with Chair, nothing to report at this time. Thank you. Protection of Persons as Property was Council Manor, she did not have any meetings scheduled. I don't know if she got through all her minutes or not. I will make sure Yvonne follows up, and if anything's outstanding, we'll take that up with the new council. Curbside Advisory Committee, Council Adams.
Please, with Chair, through you, there's nothing really new to report. We're still waiting on some numbers from PEG for the CDPG funds for a transfer station. And that's really all I have besides cleaning up the presentation to be given to the council next month or whenever the Chair chooses. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager's Search Committee, Councilman Daner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The next function of the Town, of the Search Committee will be to present the candidates tomorrow evening at 5:00, I believe, is the starting time for interviews by the council as a whole.
Thank you. COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Briefing, there is no additional update from the last meeting that we had. The Emergency Operations Center has been, has been operating on a part-time basis. Our next meeting is scheduled August 10th. At the police station or remotely. Again, we're moving into Phase 3 of the state, so we're going to see how that went for three weeks or four weeks, and go to August 10th. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, I know Chief Woodson's on the line. I don't know if he's able to talk into this, just wanted to see where our numbers were at, so the councils were aware.
Okay. Chief Woodson, are you available? We'll see if he has numbers available later on.
I can get the numbers, and I can send them out to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Chairman's Announcement. Again, thank you fellow councilors for your confidence in me and serving another year as the council chairman. Last term was, to say the least, a very challenging term. I'm grateful that we're all here as the state moves into Phase 3 of the reopening plan. I think it was just time for us to get back, as far as us as a public body, meeting in this chamber. I think going forward, though, we have to come up with some plans for the public participation part in this, because the room, as set up by the Director of Inspections, would only allow for eight people to be present in the dais. So that includes department heads, any persons of the public, and really you can't stop people from participating, so there'd be no way for us to say, "Okay, you can't come in," or who to determine who would come in to the meeting. So I did some research today, and part of it said, "May public bodies meet in person while requiring the general public to follow the proceedings remotely?" And the answer is yes, and this was from the Division of Open Government regarding open meeting questions. It's been interpreted, the governor's executive order, to permit public bodies to meet in person, but provide remote access for the public. So I, "A public body may not cap the number of attendees for the purposes of complying with the governor's order regarding gathering size and physical distancing. A small public body that typically attracts few members of the public to its meetings should not assume that it will be able to comply with the gathering size restrictions, and should plan for larger audiences." The Division of Open Government encourages public bodies to continue to offer the public alternative access to the meeting through remote means, even if the public body members will assemble in person, and the meeting will be physically accessible to the public. So I believe that interpretation for that would be that we, as a public body, would meet here, and we would do, just as I've set up this evening, have people the ability to remote in and provide that remote access. So this would have to be developed through the Town Manager's Office to make sure that all the other bodies have appropriate guidance to make sure that we're complying with the law. Of course, we could go to a larger venue, but then you have the issues of the access here, right in the council chambers. We have the cable that does YouTube, Channel 192 immediately, so all this goes out immediately to the public, so they have access to the proceedings in real time. By providing this computer, and that's why the chairman is sitting here right now, to be able to moderate whatever questions may arise from the public or during Citizens Forum that they could participate fully in the meetings as required, not only by public open meeting law, but by our charter, which allows for public participation in our meetings. So we will do our best technology-wise to make sure that the public can have a full access to our meetings. And I've asked Cable, and I've asked other departments, that this dais will state exactly like this, that if the school committee decides to meet in here, they would follow the same and not move any microphones, because everything has been set up to appropriately sized bodies, so that we could conduct the business. But when we start moving around microphones, then it messes everything up in their board inside. So please do not take any other microphones that are there. They're all set up adequately for us to participate in this meeting. Again, we have openings on boards and commissions. We mentioned this last week. The list is set in the Town Hall, Town Offices. We welcome anybody to come forward. At the recent town election, there was a failure to elect a school committee member and a Southbridge Housing Authority member. Those vacancies in elected town boards established under this charter shall be filled by the Town Council in joint convention with the remaining members of the respective board within 60 days, unless a regular town election shall occur within 120 days, but only until the next election. So anybody that's interested in the Southbridge School Committee is one position, and Southbridge Housing Authority member, one position, please contact the Town Manager's Office, get an application in, and then we will schedule meetings jointly with those bodies to make sure that we could fill the vacancy. Welcome, Councilor Ryan, Councilor Dow to the council. Look forward to working with you both. Based on Council Ryan's election to the Town Council, there is now a vacancy in the Bay Path School Committee. So we're looking to fill that. Again, that vacancy would be by joint convention of the council and the remaining member of that board, which would be the Southbridge Representative Helen Lenty. So anybody interested in the Bay Path School Committee for a one-year term, please contact the Town Manager's Office in regards to that. I've mentioned throughout the last year-plus that there's a Charter Review Committee that, based on the charter, the Town Council shall appoint a Charter Review Committee every five years. The time is up for that Charter Review Committee. I do have the list of names that have contacted me. We've had several contact me this week. So we'll get that list of names forward, and I'll bring that up at the next, hopefully in the next meeting for confirmation, so that that Charter Review Committee could begin their work. Lastly, believe that's incumbent on us as a council, well, two things actually, I'm sorry, subcommittee appointments. Please get to me any subcommittees. I know a couple of councils have mentioned staying on a couple other committees that they were on. So if you wish to be on a subcommittee, please get your name to me, and we can discuss what subcommittee assignments, so that we can announce that at the next council meeting as well, so that we can get the work together. I believe it is now time for subcommittees to get to work. There's no reason we can't act as subcommittees in this dais here to get the work done. There's a lot of projects ahead of us through DPW. General Government has a lot of work to do. So a lot of stuff that we kind of had tried to put on the backburn because of the meetings and trying to do it remotely, let's get back to work on the subcommittees. And we'll also have to take hard looks at budgets, because the state numbers probably will be coming out pretty soon, and who knows where we're at on that. And also, as a council, I'd like to set up a working meeting as a council as a whole to discuss. I had some conversations with some residents where, that brought to mind some thoughts. Perhaps a working board meeting to discuss what our vision of the community should be, our citizens, and develop a blueprint for how we move forward in the future, and work together to develop that. So with that, that's all I have this evening, so thank you for your time. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have any real announcements, but I did want to take this opportunity to congratulate our new council members. Councilor Dow, I have an opportunity to work with you on a host of business kind of questions and concerns. Wish you all the success in the world. I know you're going to bring a lot of business experience to the table, and I think the council will appreciate it, and mostly the citizens will appreciate it. So thank you for agreeing to serve, and congratulations on the victory. Councilor Ryan, it is really nice to see you up at the table. We've had a lot of discussions over the last number of years. You've served honorably on the school committee and did everything you can to move the school system forward and work with the receiver to accomplish change in our school system for the better for the children of this town. So I wanted to thank you for all your work involved with that, congratulate you, and wish you all the success in the world as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations and swearing-in we have done this evening. Citizens Forum. Anybody in the audience that wishes to come to the podium? They left, right? So nobody here? Is there anyone participating remotely as a citizen that wishes to address the Town Council? Anyone? Last call? All right, seeing none? Move on to Agenda Item 9. Vote to approve a fire department transfer from account number 001220-551500 Training Materials to account number 001220-548000 Motor Vehicle Parts and Accessories, in the amount of $400 to cover unexpected costs associated with the parts needed to keep vehicles in service. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion as second. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, it's a very small transfer of $400, just to keep our vehicles working at the end of the year. As you guys saw at the last meeting, a lot of last-minute transfers to move money around and take care of unexpected problems. It's a very small one. If you have any questions, the fire chief is on remote access as well.
Chief, we're going to try this, so give me a second. I'm going to find the light. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Council, for reorganizing tonight.
Hold on, hold on a second. I'm trying to find my microphone. This is why we're testing this this evening. Go ahead, Chief.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Now, barely. Go ahead, speak loud.
Thank you, councilors, in regards to our transfer tonight. I'll keep it short. This is to keep our inspector's vehicle and put it back on the road.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I can't hear him. I can't understand anything he's saying. Thank you. What he stated, it's a last-minute transfer to keep a vehicle on the road relative to the inspector's vehicle. And I think if I use my laptop, it would probably work better because of where my speaker bar is. So any other questions on this? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Mr. Chairman?
Give me a second. Let's take a recess for five minutes, just so I can get this set up. All right, I think we have that set up. The only question would be, if a council has a question or dialogue, it's going to be very difficult for the, they can hear, everybody at home can hear council's talk, because it's direct feeded into the system. It's, if they're listening on this computer and they're logged into the computer, they may not have a high time. So we'll work on that, but I'll repeat any questions to the department head. So I don't know if you'll indulge me, I got a late transfer from the fire chief and Karen asking if I could have a motion to suspend the rules and add it. We are at the end of the fiscal year. Fiscal year has concluded, and all transfers have to be done by the end of the week, so this is a transfer. So if I could have a motion to suspend the rules?
I make a motion, now we suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules and add an Agenda Item, which would be 9A, which would be a fire department transfer.
Mr. Chair, do we do 9?
We already did 9, yeah. Everybody voted in favor of that.
We voted.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Not with it. Thank you. Thank you. I'm here.
Okay, roll call on suspend the rules and add the Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we haven't voted, we have, do we have to do a roll call to all of these votes? I was going to ask you that a second ago.
No, because we're all here in public?
Despite the fact that it says the order says required.
I announced that at the beginning of the meeting that.
Just wanted to clarify, okay.
Yeah, because we're all public. Nobody's remote participation as far as our public body. We're all in the same location.
That makes it a lot easier.
But this is suspend the rules and add to the Agenda, Item 9A, for a fire department transfer. Yes.
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 Katrona?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
And Council Steves?
Yes.
The motion would be to read, vote to approve a fire transfer from account number 001220.51100 Salaries to account number 001220.513000 Overtime, in the amount of $5,025 for unexpected costs associated with several full-shift coverages and direct trip coverages for the final fiscal year 2020.
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion? Do you want an explanation from the chief on that?
Please.
Okay. Chief? Go ahead.
I hope everybody can hear me, but thank you for the time to explain this. This definitely is a transfer that the last eight days of the fiscal year, we had several recalls for service to cover the station. It also had some direct trips to the city of Worcester. Unfortunately, this is the way we do recall, to protect the citizens with proper coverage. I really accept, I hope that this transfer goes through, because it's definitely needed to end out the fiscal year.
Any questions? Council Ryan?
I would just request that we would have a transfer form either put in our mailboxes or sent to our emails.
Yeah, I do have the transfer form right here. I'll have it forwarded to you all. It is, it is signed with the unexpected cost for several ship recalls. I'll make sure that gets out to everybody. Normally, we do have that. It was just a last-minute transfer, so.
I figured that. I just wanted to request it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It was either added on tonight or called a special Town Council meeting to transfer 190, so.
Mr. Chairman, could you just repeat the amount for me, please?
The amount was $5,025.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 10, vote to approve a library transfer from account number 001610-530200 Data Processing to account number 001610-524300 Repair and maintenance of buildings and grounds in the amount of $1,350 for COVID-19 projects and materials expenditures not anticipated, thus leaving the budget short.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a list of the things that our library director bought for from this money, but essentially it's things like the plexiglass shields we have in Town Hall. They had to do the same thing at the library, hand sanitizer, cleaning materials. Those are all reimbursable under the CARES Act and under other grant funds. So whatever we expend from this account will be reimbursed. As you know, our finance director is keeping track what the department has of each of those expenditures, much of which has already been funded for 2020. Anything after July 1st is going to be in the 2020 reimburse, 2021 reimbursement.
Any questions? Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Manager. Is there a total number that has been spent to date?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that total number, I didn't bring it with me, but it was sent to the Town Council for the application for fiscal year 2020. All the Town Council members got a breakdown of that amount and what would be reimbursed. We already received the reimbursement already, so the money for fiscal year 2020 has already been received by the town.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. What do we have left to spend?
I'm sorry, you're talking about from what's left of the 2020 funds?
Yes.
Most of the 2020 spends, funds have been spent, and what we applied for. The one big issue was a, not sure the name of the machine, so I'll explain what it does, and then you can get an idea. One big issue that was supposed to happen in 2021 was moved into, 2020 was moved into 2021. The machine is used for taking things like masks and gowns and stuff, and crumpling up and breaking it down so that it's not dangerous anymore. But because of the bidding process and the timing of that, it could not be done in time for 2021. So Karen reached out to the people involved in the CARES Act, and so far, we believe that it's going to be purchased in 2020, and we're going to be able to use the money in 2021 instead of 2020. But all the things like the cleaning of the buildings and all that stuff in 2020 has all been done. All those will be invoiced and billed through Karen's office, and she'll pay the bills. But it deals with things like the plexiglass shields, it deals with the cleaning of the Town Hall building, and some of the other things like that.
Thank you. Council Ryan?
Can I, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Town Manager, can I have that form forwarded to my email there? You had it forwarded to all the other councils. I have a new council, so I don't have it.
Absolutely. We'll forward tomorrow. We'll forward out the money we applied for, and all councils were also notified that we got the total amount that we applied for. So I'll have that forwarded, and I'll send it again to all the councilors to make sure everybody has it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 11, vote to approve a water department transfer from account number 610450-583000 Capital Reserve to account number 610450-583721-20580 System Capital Charlton, in the amount of $2,303.13 to cover the account overage until the reimbursement from the town of Charlton Water and Sewer Department is received. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I can explain this, but our Assistant DPW Director is here. He can explain this in detail, but it's a common expense that we do every year.
We had a water main break on Route 20 in Charlton. Mr. Pioppi assisted, and his invoice was just over $14,000. We had about $12,000 left in the System Capital for Charlton account. The remainder of that is being billed to Charlton, but until that money gets back, we need to cover it with our capital reserves. And then it'll roll back into the capital reserves once we get that money remitted from Charlton.
Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 12, vote to confirm the reappointment of Rosemary Alicia to the trustees of Soldiers, Marines, and Amarin Memorials Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023, pending completion of the state ethics training. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, so Ms. Alicia just came on board on the trustees' board, and then COVID happened, and we really haven't met since then. We plan on meeting, or the trustees plan on meeting at the end of the month. She obviously volunteered for this position. She's a go-getter, and she looks forward to hopefully filling out another couple of years with this to see some of these monuments taken care of, and maybe place in different areas. That's really, I have an honor at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Anything from the Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, just to say, the next number of things are reappointments. The Town Manager's Office goes through a process of talking to the chairs of every board and commission to see how these people have served on each of those boards and commissions before reappointments are made. If the board chairman is happy with the reappointment, feels that the person is doing good work, then we put him back on the agenda for reappointment.
Thank you. Any questions? Council Ryan?
I would just, it was a sentiment echoed by the last council, and I think it's a good one. I'm personally not a fan of automatic reappointments. So something that this council could discuss going into the future of possibly moving away towards that and moving towards an open application process. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it was, it was a topic of discussion at the last, and I think we're going to refer some of that information to General Government. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of people that are knocking down doors to get on boards and commissions. We've been struggling. So if, my personal opinion, I'd like to have it gone through General Government to talk about a process, make sure we have it done, but a lot of these boards and commissions struggle to even keep members on them or have full slates of members. So I thank them for stepping up. Trustees and Memorials was a brand-new committee that was part of the charter, and we're lucky to fill that, but the point is well-taken, and we'll take it up in General Government. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 13, vote to confirm the reappointment of Raymond Arnold to the Southridge Trails Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023, pending completion of the state ethics committee.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Just for the new councils thereon, you'll see, typically, we never had the pending completion of state ethics training as part of the reappointment process. Last term, when the Executive Assistant for the Town Manager's Office asked for these appointments to be put on, she stated a number of people had failed to complete ethics training as required by law. So that ethics committee training, that's why we have it on there now, so that they're pending, that they get training, make sure that we're all in compliance with the ethics board. Council Steves?
Yeah, a quick question. I guess it's through you to the manager. So are we giving them a specific timeframe to do this by?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Quite frankly, it's a very easy process. It's all of an hour or two to work. So, you know, me and Yvonne had a long discussion about this, and most of them do the ethics training, Council Steves. There's just a couple of stragglers, and we don't want to get them in a position where they just don't do it. They're on a board, there's nothing holding back. So this is our way of making sure it gets done before they come on, but it really shouldn't be a long process, because it's a pretty easy thing to do.
Well, I know that, but what I'm asking is, do we give them a deadline, like, say, the end of July?
Yeah, I mean, we could tell them, but we're basically telling them we're not reappointing you until you get it on, which is the pressure to do it, and most of them, I think, will react pretty quickly to that. There's only a few, but it's those few that are a problem, because we need everybody by law to do it, so.
Right. Well, I know that, yeah.
Council Steves, just as a follow-up, I understand is to give them 30 days to comply.
Okay.
That's the state law. So I had to ask Yvonne to research what the state law said, and to follow whatever the state guidelines were. So the state guidelines were 30 days.
Okay.
Because there were many people, it wasn't just a few stragglers. There were many people that have served on boards that just refused to do it. And so this is just a way to say, hey, if you want to stay on this board, make sure it's done, so. Council Adams?
So, Mr. Chair, maybe through to the Town Manager, then if it's the 30 days, if it's 30 days, you remove them automatically, have Yvonne update the boards and committees list that there's a new opening, say, on planning or whatever it may be. That way, the residents who do want to participate, who will to get the training done, can apply, just.
Be happy to do that, Chairman.
Thank you, counselor.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Council Steves?
Quick observations, and also, I just want to double-check, because I know there has been an issue with a certain individual about whether or not people actually formally get sworn into their boards. So obviously, we need to make sure that they do that, too. I mean, they're both, they're both kind of, they should be no duh things, but sometimes they are.
Right, yeah.
We'll follow up on both those issues.
My understanding through Yvonne's office, the minute we started putting on this pending completion, a lot of them went and had it done right away. So it did work by saying, hey, you got to get it done. Any further discussion on Raymond Arnold? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 14, vote to confirm the reappointment of Lori Denlevon to the Scholarship Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021, pending completion of the state ethics training. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on this? She's served a long time. We thank her for that. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. That is another board that has had a vacancy, I think, for one member or two members for at least three years that I've been on council, so. Anybody who's interested, that is a board that is looking for people. Vote to confirm the reappointment of AJ Larishel to the Scholarship Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June, that should be June 30th, 2021, pending completion of the state ethics training.
So moved. Second.
Any comments, questions?
Did you do a background check on this guy?
I don't know, yeah. Not sure. We thank him for his service, though. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 16, vote to confirm the reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as Department Enforcement Officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021, pending completion of the state ethics training. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 17, vote to reappoint Cassandra Ackley to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021, pending completion of the state ethics training. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Town Manager, do you know what position she holds on the group that's from Southbridge? Is that, what positions she represents? Because there's a, I believe, a council appointee, town appointee.
This is specifically to the Regional Planning Commission directly.
But there's five positions, and each one has a certain slot. Do you know which one she holds?
I do not.
I know Council Adams serves as the Town Council designee.
I would assume she's the planning board designee, but I'm not.
She could be, yeah. Okay.
I can go back and look that up.
No, that's fine.
They give me a list, but I.
We can check into it for you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions on that? Council Adams?
It's a friendly amendment to that, too, since we're confirming authority. Just vote to confirm the reappointment, instead of reappoint.
Reappointment?
Yes. So it'd be vote to confirm the reappointment, just like the rest of them.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Right.
Thank you. I missed that.
Right.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Friendly, yes, sir.
Any opposition to a friendly amendment? Okay, so should we vote to reappoint Cassandra Ackley? All those, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Marketti and Counsel Lazo oppose? Item 18, vote to confirm the reappointment of David Livinggood to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, pending completion of the state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Marketti and Counsel Lazo oppose. Motion carries. Item 19. We got away from this from three, four months, but it's back. So, vote to amend Section 6-200, Keeping of Pets Bylaw according to the changes made and recommended. This is the second reading, July 6, 2020. Counsel Ryan?
Oh, I, um, there's been no motion, right? No motion's been made yet, right?
No.
Motion made to what?
I'm not making a motion. I was just, I forgot there was no motion made yet.
I'm sorry?
No motion was made yet. I was, I was.
There is no motion. It's a reading, so we can either read the whole thing or a motion to waive the reading and add any questions or changes. Counsel Adams?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend to, to waive the reading at this point.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And according to Town Council Attorney thing, as long as no member objects to the waiving of the reading, we can waive the reading or the second reading. If there's any changes, we can discuss the changes and make any changes, but instead of reading the entire bylaw in the entirety. So the bylaw would be posted in the Town Manager's Office at the police station in the lobby, so that it's available 24/7. It's available on the town's website, Town Clerk's Office, Town Manager's Office. So, it's a motion, a second to waive the reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Steve?
Do you, I know when we did the lengthy, like marijuana bylaw and so forth, so forth, you had at least a summary of the bylaw. Do you have that?
Yeah, I don't know if, I know the chief is on. Chief Woodson, do you happen to have highlights of the changes or Caitlin? I know Caitlin's on as well, so.
Oh, yeah.
Caitlin?
Good evening.
Good evening, Caitlin. Everybody can hear Caitlin?
I think so.
Go ahead, Caitlin. Caitlin?
Yes, sorry, I got a little bit of lag on my part.
Okay.
The question about highlighted section?
Yeah, highlighted changes of the Keeping of the Pets Bylaw.
Did they need a copy of it?
No, do you, do you, can you just highlight what some of the changes were that you made since the last reading or any changes?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yes. Some of those changes that we're proposing is changing the licensing to licensing a dog for a one-year term versus the option of a one-year versus three-year. The, the other section is for the rabies section. Some of the terminology that was used was outdated and we just clarified what quarantines were versus vaccinations. We also updated definitions to this section and we added tethering a dog to, um, like, or outside. Also confinement to a motor vehicle during weather advisories was also added. Other than that, it was just updating to what the Massachusetts general law has in regards to animal control issues in the state.
Okay. Of course, Counsel Ryan? I may have to repeat it because they may not hear you, but go ahead.
Um, I believe I asked this at general government, but I want to ask it again. Why are we getting rid of the three-year licenses?
Okay, Caitlin, questions? Why are we getting rid of the three-year licenses? I know you've stated that a few times, but go ahead again on the, as an update to the public as well as the council of the reason for getting rid of the three-year license. Know that we had a lot of conversation about it, but go ahead.
Uh, so there was a couple of things that were brought up. Our compliance in the town in general is really low compared to our other surrounding towns. One of the other things that came up was we're the only town in Mass, in the central Massachusetts area that actually offers a three-year license. Enforcement for the three-year license is very difficult through our licensing program that we have currently. If somebody is able to apply for a three-year dog license, it makes it, we have to modify our computer system, which makes it very difficult to generate a list of non-licensed because a three-year shows it's non-licensed even though it's current. Also, people are under the impression that once they get a three-year license, they're always going to get a three-year license. With the way how it's worded, it's supposed to go correlate with the rabies vaccine. In 2016, there's changes to the rabies vaccine that made it really difficult for people to keep up with the three-year dog license with the vaccination part.
Okay. Any further questions? Counsel Lazo?
I'd just like to comment on Caitlin Spencer and what she's done with this bylaw. I remember when it started in the early stages at subcommittee and it really got hammered out and questioned and kicked and pushed in every which way. I can honestly say that, you know, I feel comfortable with the document as amended and there was a tremendous amount of time put into this and I know that I'm in favor of adopting this here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion on the waiving of the reading or any questions for Caitlin on what's in the bylaw right now? Seeing none. All those in favor of waiving the reading? Opposed? Okay. So this, Caitlin, if you can make sure, and the chief, make sure you have a copy of this in the police station lobby. Make sure that the Town Manager's Office and Town Clerk's Office has it as well, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 20, discuss the interview process for Town Manager candidates. As you're aware, tomorrow evening, beginning at 5:00 p.m., we have the beginners of the finalists interviews for Town Manager beginning at 5:00 p.m. In your packet, there's questions, proposed questions and format for the meeting. I would want to take this opportunity to, because publicly we have to be able to meet to talk about any questions about what we want to ask. Is there any conversation on these questions about how we would do it? I think for at least the first two interviews, the first two candidates will be here in Town Hall. They will be at the, at the desk here for those interviews. The third candidate is a remote interview from North Carolina. So I think for that interview, my belief is that I think every council should have the opportunity to ask one question of the two candidates that are here in the dais, given the fact that we have to do this remotely. For the North Carolina guy, he would be up on this, on the, on the screen. You'll be able to see him. You would hear him just like you hear Caitlin right now, but it may be impossible to have each council ask a question because you would have to ask the question. I probably have to state the first question and state it to the candidate. So if there's no opposition to that plan, we'd like to do that. Counsel Ryan?
Um, I believe we have to ask the same questions of all candidates, correct?
Correct, yes.
So that means even though we ask, if we ask the questions of the two, first two candidates, don't we have to ask the question of the third candidate?
It would be the same question. It would just be the person that's asking the question. So the first two candidates, each council would have an opportunity to ask the question directly to the candidate. The third interview, I would ask the questions directly into the screen, just otherwise, I don't want people to have to come here because of COVID-19 and everything. I don't want somebody coming here to the microphone to ask the question. It'd just be easy for me to moderate that dialogue on that. But the question I have is you have a list of questions. I'd like to go through these list of questions. These were questions provided to us by our consultant, Paradigm. Paradigm, I guess Counsel Daniel, if you want to give a brief update as to the process that you have for the new councils that are here, if you'd like, because they are new sitting councils, as to how many candidates and whittled down, and now we're at the stage of the finalists.
Run, if you want to. If you choose, for a few minutes, that's fine, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we have the rest of the meeting. Okay. I don't want you to be uncomfortable, so.
All right, do you want me to start from the beginning?
No, just a brief update about 28 candidates.
Very good. We, okay. Through you, Mr. Chair. We had 28 candidates apply from throughout the country and we narrowed it down to eight semifinalists. The eight semifinalists were interviewed on June 20th and 22nd, a Monday and a Wednesday, and from there, the committee broke it down to the three finalists that were presenting tomorrow evening. The questions that we're asking here are part of the total number of questions that we had listed as questions that we want to ask the candidates. We had not only just questions, but we had a dialogue as well. We developed a dialogue with the candidates so that we could, in effect, get them talking a little bit. And then we were able to follow up with other questions to dig a little bit deeper into what, what the answers were that we were, we were hearing from the candidates to begin with. So we think we got a pretty good sense as to where the candidates were coming from philosophically and practically in terms of their background, their skills, and what they were looking for. The committee in particular was looking for candidates that very closely matched the qualities that were listed in the position statement as being an ideal candidate. So the position statement was, was part of the application process that the candidates had and the candidates were then compared to what we were advertising for. The, the qualities and the position statement were constructed after interviews by community paradigm with, with the previous council, with department heads and with essential people in town. And it was the feeling of the search committee that the, the qualities were very, very much indicative of what we were searching for in terms of a counselor, I'm sorry, as a town manager. So we think that you've got three high-quality candidates that meet the criteria that were spelled out by the questioning of the council and the department heads and the essential people. I think you're going to have a tough choice. There's some very high-quality candidates. So in terms of questioning tomorrow night, if, if you choose to have each can, each counselor ask one question, that would be perfectly fine. That'd be a little bit of a shakeoff, which is not a bad thing. That would be a good thing, I think.
So I opened up to the council. How is, any individual councils that want to make comments about what process do you feel that each council should ask a question of those, two candidates at least, and then the third do what I suggested? But Counsel Lazo, go ahead.
I got a question for Vice Chair Daniels. Counsel, we have three candidates and we're going to interview them. What was the distance between like the fourth candidate as far as quality and qualifications compared to the three that were in front of us?
Can I answer that question?
Yeah, you, yeah, very generically, yeah.
Very generically? I think that, that there, there was somewhat of a drop-off. I think that, that the three that we have are definitely higher quality. I can tell you that two of the candidates rose to the top right away and the third candidate kind of came in strong as a, as a strong finish, but two of the candidates came right to the top.
The reason why I asked the question is the actual pointing of the managers to council duty after the search ends off, I was under the impression that we were going to have four candidates. I could be wrong, but in the beginning stages, I thought, and I've been on Town Manager searches and that's, I was under the impression, if there was no discussion on that, then, then it's a dead issue, but I was, I was just wondering what the differential was. If a fourth one should have been on, I don't know. I don't even know who the fourth one was.
The council was the one that set forth the charge to the search committee and we agreed on three. It was three.
Okay.
Three candidates.
Thank you, Jim.
Counsel Ryan? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Marketti.
Go right ahead. No, you can go right ahead. Go right ahead.
I apologize. Go ahead, Counsel Ryan. As a new council, go ahead. He's had his show as new council, so he can.
Uh, thank you. I have no problem with this format. It's what we do when we're looking for a new superintendent. We have, every school community member asks this prospective superintendent a question. They ask them the same question and it's, it's standard procedure. It's the only way to make sure it's fair. We also, since there's seven of us, oh, excuse me, nine of us, I have to get used to that. Nine of us, we all get to ask a question that can be radically different from each other and I, I think it allows for a really thorough interview, so I have no problem with it.
Okay. Counsel Marketti?
Uh, just, just for clarification, you, we're each allowed one question, but you want us to ask a question off of that, that list, or can we ask our own question?
The council has to decide what questions you want. So these are some draft questions. If there's something that the council feels that, feels strongly about or council wants to propose to the council and change any of these, again, they only have an hour to interview, so we can't have, you know, a million questions, as much as I'd love to have a million questions. These were some of the draft questions or thought process. That's why I put it on the agenda tonight, not just simply said, here you go, here's the questions, councilors ask these. Like to have some dialogue as to what do you think of these questions? Is there one you want to take off that you think you can incorporate in a different question? Or what is the thought that you have? I'd gladly entertain anything you have, council. But you, again, to Counsel Ryan's point, and I've served as Counsel Lazo has as well on, on searches and Counsel Steve's, when you ask questions, you can only ask the questions that are on that thing. You can't ask different questions of each candidate. So to have fair, balanced, I mean, obviously if there's a follow-up and you wanted somebody to expound on a question or an answer that they gave, you could ask them to expound, but the questions have to be the same for all candidates for fairness. So is there a question that you, you have that you think should be added?
No, I actually thought the questions were good. I just wouldn't ask them exactly that way, but I didn't realize we were only going to be allowed one question, but that's fine. If that's, if that's the format, that's fine.
Yeah.
I, but I just don't know if I would have asked the questions exactly the same way that they've put them, you know, like.
Well, is there, this is an open dialogue, council, so.
Some, some of the questions, I would say that I don't, I don't see how they can answer some of the questions. What are you going to do about a landfill? I don't know how a guy can answer that. Questions about his style, I get that. The way he manages, how he gets along with counselors, questions like that, those are very fair questions, but what are you going to do about, you know, a new building or a landfill or something like that? I don't see how a guy can answer a question like that, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. I mean, do you have any suggestions? I mean, formulate something and you think that it can be asked in a different manner? Gladly, this is the time to, to have any robust discussion about it. So, Counsel Steve?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things based on.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can, can you hear me now? Okay. I have a couple of things actually based on reading their documents and I was, I was originally thinking about them as questions that would be maybe geared to a specific finalist, but I can also see them being generalized, too. One of them specifically mentions stormwater background and I know we're going to have an issue with that about trying to figure out how we're going to fund that in town. I think we ought to throw that, a question about that in there somewhere. And what I was thinking is this, we need to create a system to fund stormwater. What, what experience do you have doing that and how did you get public buy-in? Because that's going to be critical if it's going to go anywhere and we're going to need to do that because it's going to be hugely expensive.
Yeah, the stormwater is a big issue, so.
And that's going to come up under the next time, under the next manager without a doubt. Another issue I was thinking of is the whole idea of, we were talking, we've been talking about the idea of whether or not we want to do a fire station and I would love to see what kind of experience they have with overrides and how, how did they get public buy-in and if it failed, how did they change direction? And or, and or come up with another way to fund it. And a third question I had was kind of playing off of the holding staff accountable section, it's a question that's already listed here. If you have had to reduce staff for financial reasons, which hopefully we don't have to, but we might, how did you handle it without ill will? Because I would love to, that would give me, I think that would be a good way to see how they, how they deal with people under, under rather stressful circumstances for the people that are leaving. I think that's kind of important.
Okay, I could barely hear you, but if you could put those in draft form and send it to me tonight? And what category it might fall under, we can tweak that question a little bit.
Okay.
Counsel Marketti?
Just one more thing. I mean, if you're going to go through this and each council is going to get a question and let's say Counsel Lazo asks a question, I'll say, oh, no, I was going to ask that question. I don't know how you're going to deal with that.
No, we would just go down the list. So question one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's just whatever list the questions are, you ask that question of that candidate. It's just based on this.
Okay.
Really, it gives you opportunity to ask the question and listen, you know, it just gets a little bit of a fail for each council as opposed to just one person asking a question. Counsel, Counsel Lazo?
To follow Marketti, Counsel Marketti's point, Mike Crema is going to be via remote. I think that he's going to be at a disadvantage. Anybody that goes on remote, because I've got to tell you, I've done these. to tell you, I've done these interviews. I remember being chairman of the Florence Chandler search. Yes, you have your boilerplate. How's your relationship with the council? Oh, we're going to be great, fantastic. But I think what we have to remember is spurring questions off of the boilerplate, and I'm a big fan of situation questions. Put the town manager in a situation with your question, then let the town manager answer it on how to handle the situation. But as a council, I'm not a fan of having just an hour, okay? I think that the interview committee search had more of a hands-on working of the clay. If we do a formal, on-TV boilerplate, you're not going to really get a good feel of the candidate, I don't think, unless we ask situation questions that we've lived in this town, like throw the Central Street parking lot on a table with a manager. What did you do? All of a sudden, you have to react to a problem that the community experienced, and at that point, you get a better feel of the candidate because you're going to get different push from each candidate. But to be fair to the candidates, you have to give all the candidates the same pushback. And I think that was a healthy process with the council. Getting the candidates up here is the easy part by setting goals and objectives and all types of things as a committee, a search committee to move it forward. But when it comes to the final say of the council, you are going to appoint somebody that is going to run this community and manage this community under the leadership of the council. He better understand the charter before he walks through the door. He better know a lot of the bylaws, Massachusetts general laws, and a lot of other things. Because we did a nationwide search for a manager, and when it came through, someone from Michigan came here, had no clue about Massachusetts general laws, head reform, and various other laws. So the poor guy had to really bone up compared to the candidates that came from the state. So you're going to get a lot of diversity, a lot of differential in answers, but you want to get into the town manager's gut feeling of how he's going to deal with this council, this town, and these problems. And it's your job as a council to push that envelope respectfully in an interview. Now, I'm a big fan of, if you're going to interview all three, and all of a sudden we feel there's two, I think maybe we should suggest changing the rule or whatever, bring two of them back and go a little harder at the two of them, because when you make this appointment, it's going to be a great impact on this community. It's a big decision. Thank you.
So to your point, counsel, do you have a suggestion on a topic that... Say, I mean, I'm not married to these questions. These were draft questions. This is the only opportunity we really have to debate this and get the questions out there, and that's why we're doing an open...
Mr. Chairman, I think that the process was good. I think the questions are good, the generic. But when the manager answers the generic question, I think the council should have the opportunity to ask a situation question that would be on the same lines as leadership and management style. What is your leadership and management style, Mr. Manager? Well, what I believe in is team concept, and you're going to hear all the same boilerplate answers. And then you might want to turn around and give him a situation question. Then you're going to feel the real manager. You're not going to get the window dressing. I don't really want to change these questions. I think this is the right questions. But I think don't corner yourself as a council and say, you can't go stay in the realm, but give it a good situation question where you push back. Then you're going to feel about which manager is strong, which manager is arrogant, and which manager you want. That's how this interview process goes. It's a boilerplate in the beginning, but the quality of the interview is only as good as the quality of the council and the questions that you put in. So I understand you want to open them up and create questions, but I think what you've done, for instance, they get an introduction. You're going to get a pleasant introduction from all three. Role of town manager, you're going to get a feel of it, but you can very quickly give them a situation question on the role of the manager and council relationship. If he's read the charter, he'll understand what the job is, and he'll give you the right answer. And then you can put him into a situation on that question in that realm and ask all three managers the same question, and you'll get a better feel when they answer the question on role of town manager relationship. You go down to finance, you're going to find out immediately when you got a town manager bailing the question to, I am going to revert to my financial experts, my financial department. Great, you know nothing about finance. Put him in a situation, what would you do? We've experienced plenty of them. You're going to get the competence answer and strongly from the right manager, and then you will formulate which one you want. This is just from experience of, I've been on manager searches, chairman of them, superintendent searches, I know Mr. Joe Vane has. I think what you have to do is get a feel of these guys or girls in the interview, and the boilerplate questions are outstanding for starters, but they're generic. And I think the quality of this council in business, in public service and stuff, you see the town of Southbridge, the streets, and the problems that we're experiencing with the takeover of the school district. These are the real questions, is a situation question, and that's what you've got to keep in the back of your mind. So between now and interview time, look at these questions. They're great. It's a good start, but the situation question will give you a better feeling, man, or the woman, whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Adams? Counsel Adams, yes.
Whoever is first.
I'll go to Counsel Adams, and then I'll go back to Counsel Steve.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, I do agree that these questions are good, but what I would recommend at this point is say something like, if Counsel Dow was comfortable with finance, let Counsel Dow ask the question about finance, and maybe a follow-up question, maybe be a situational question, but it obviously has to be the same question to all three individuals. And if I'm comfortable with economic or leadership, I ask that question and with a follow-up situational question at the same time. That way, I know that I would do rules of town manager, but I know Counsel Marketti will do financial question. Counsel Ryan would be collective bargaining or whatever it may be that we would pick, and just tonight, we could sit there and say, you know what, I want to do finances. Counsel Steve wants to do, you know, alternative revenues and grants out of these. I mean, if he wanted to do those questions with a follow-up situational question, I like that idea. I know we don't have all the time in the world, but I think they should be really good.
Well, I think, I understand where Counsel Lazo is coming from, because I can envision you have a person that says, like you said, role of town manager, relationship with town council. Somebody that does look for the job will probably come out, and you may not even have to ask that question about any question, because he may have already addressed every council, hey, I've watched your meetings, I understand the chatter, I've looked at this, that, and everything, and that question may be answered. Am I right, Counsel Lazo?
Absolutely.
So you'll get the feel of it. When we say same question, the same base question will be asked, but every follow-up question does not, I don't think necessarily have to be, because it is all based on the given, take, based on the answer given. You want to be as close to the original question as possible, but if somebody brings up, well, look, I've read your charter, I understand there's been some questions about transfer policy, right? And this is how I would work within the council to try to maybe work with you to come up with a better plan, or something like that. I think that's where it's at. But we want to try to be as close to every candidate gets the same equal opportunity to address the major tenets of the questions.
So then I agree with that as far as the original question is concerned. Obviously, if you have to have a follow-up question, hopefully that individual didn't, like, answer that question already. So maybe you just don't have a follow-up. You just have a situational question on finance.
Let me ask you a question on the process. There's an hour per candidate. I mean, that's not a lot of time to do what we have to do, and I think we should extend the time or have another interview.
Well, as you can see, it says approximate for the next two.
But, Mr. Chairman, say Counsel Adams asks a question about a budgetary item or a budget, you know, what's your budget experience with shortfalls and grants and everything? Is another counselor allowed to ask a question off his question?
I would recognize another counsel if they had something to say, because this is a robust interview.
If someone would bring up a budgetary question, and with the covert and the shortfalls on revenue, which I think are coming, okay, that's the red flag that I see, just hypothetically, when you turn to a man and say, what would you cut? Police, fire, education, where do you get it? That's a situation question that might sway one of your counselors as far as where a manager would go after first.
I don't see how I could answer a question like that.
But that question's not here, but it's a good situation question off of finance. That's what it is.
Yeah. Counsel Steve?
I was just curious about, to follow up on what Counsel Lazo mentioned a second ago, a little while ago, about whether or not, it seems like what you, at least, you seem to be suggesting is that we bring somebody back for a second round, maybe on Thursday, instead of using that as our voting day, that we bring back one or two people that day to do some of these more detailed questions if they're willing to do it, which would be, I mean, it would certainly be a challenge for Mr. Kramer since he's in North Carolina, but if he ends up being one of the top candidates...
Counselor, could you hook up, please? I can't hear you.
And I don't have a problem with doing that, actually. I think that's a good idea, because that would give us some time to think about what they tell us tomorrow night, and then we can more personalize questions based on what they tell us from their experience, from what we see from them, what we see in our town, like you were mentioning about situational questions. And I think that would allow us to definitely drill into really which one or two, which one of them would be the top choice. But that would certainly require us, then I think we need to set something up, maybe next Monday to actually vote.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the second meeting was purely a discussion of the interviews so that we could have a really detailed discussion about what our findings were, what our thoughts were, and that wasn't just vote, too. It's a discussion, and if there's a vote, there's a vote. If not, if we decide, because it is an important decision that has to be made, and I'm not married to rushing into any decision. We take our time and make sure that we get the right candidate. We're not going to just appoint to the sake of appointment. But hopefully, I'm sure everybody has done some homework on the candidates that are here. I know I have. I've seen some of the, you know, where they've interviewed in the past, some of their performance in the past, because everything's on Google, so you can find it on Google if you really want to. You get a sense of their style and everything else, so... But I've said, I know people in public have said, well, don't just make a decision to make a decision. I know personally, I'm not going to make a decision on a town manager just because I want to fill a seat. I'm going to make sure we do our due diligence. My personal belief, not as chairman, but personally as a counselor, is that we do our due diligence and find the right fit. I'm sure, based on a couple of things that I've seen, there's good candidates, but then again, I've seen great candidates come before for superintendents of schools, and then not so much. So you have to do your homework. I mean, we were in a position on school committee that we had people that we brought, and we brought them back for second interviews. We did do second interviews on a Saturday. I think we did them for several of the candidates, and some of them that didn't do so well in the first round did really well in the second round, but then when we did their site visits and did some background stuff, it filtered back to our original feelings. So it was a lot of work to do, so a lot of work for the council to do on this decision. I'll go Counsel Ryan, and then Counsel Daniel. Did you, I don't know if I saw your hand up. No? If not, I'll go to Counsel Dan. Counsel Dan?
I just want to say that it's my understanding that calling candidates back for a second interview after a final interview is unusual. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it by any stretch of the imagination, but I don't know that the candidates, in terms of being feared of the candidates, I don't know that the candidates are necessarily aware that they could be called back for a second interview. It's my understanding that they understood that they'd be questioning tomorrow night and that there would be further discussion on Thursday night amongst the council. So just to put it out there, they may or may not feel unprepared for a second set of Not that we shouldn't do it. Not that we shouldn't do it, but it's not the norm in terms of selection process of town managers in this area.
Thank you. Counsel Katron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counsel Daniels. I'm not a fan of rushing this process, especially when it comes time for financial questions that we know we have to ask the next town manager. I don't believe, and I'm being repetitive, that this process should be rushed. If there are more questions, I feel strongly that they should be back a second time for a second round of questions. If they're not comfortable doing that, if they don't want to do that, then they don't want to be a town manager here in Southbridge. Just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I don't think necessarily that we're saying there will be a second round. We have to wait to see what they interview like. I mean, that's why rarely tonight is, let's pin down, if everybody's comfortable with these questions, that's the way we'll go forward tomorrow night, and then get a sense of where we're at after that. That's why there's no motion on the table tomorrow night. A lot of places will make a motion that, right after their third interview, to appoint somebody. That's why I think we said, let's take a day and reflect and see where we're at. Counsel Steve?
I was curious, I guess, I don't have it to you, but I guess it's to you, to Counsel Daniel. And I'm not sure whether the law will allow us to do this, but can we have access to the notes specifically regarding these three candidates that the committee, the questions and the responses that the committee got from these three candidates, since they are our finalists? I mean, obviously, I don't expect to get them from anyone else, but these three?
I'm going to probably say no, because everything done until the vote for finalists is executive session material. That would have to be reviewed by legal counsel, but I think their notes would be part of an executive session. Their job is to recommend three finalists.
Yeah, I know.
So those are the three finalists, and then it's incumbent on us to ask questions and find out what happened. But that was executive session, so any notes they took was during executive session, so my understanding would be, again, I'm not an attorney, but I believe that that would be executive session material.
Yeah, I'm thinking it probably would be, but I was just wondering if there was like some sort of a way that they could come out because they are also our finalists, so...
No, I think it's our job now to ask the questions and see if they, I mean, obviously, the search committee could listen to the meeting, and we have two counselors that participated in some of the interviews, so they would know whether we're getting the same answers or not. I would hope so. I would think that you would get the same flavor regardless of it's in an interview with a search committee as opposed to the full committee, so...
And in that case, I could follow up on that, then, to you, to Counsel Daniel and Katrona. The questions that we have, the draft questions that we have here, how many of these were created after, because as Counsel Lazo pointed out, they're relatively generic. How many of them were created after you talked to all three candidates and had already come up with the idea that they were probably the finalists, so that you took it from something that they said that you wanted to follow up on? Because I think that's kind of what we should be doing, is following up a lot on what you guys already discovered, rather than repeating what you've already discovered.
Well, I think the, well, these questions were formulated after the interview process was over.
Okay.
But I think that if you look at the position statement and the posting, you'll see that the issues that were brought up by the council are, we tried to address in the construction of the questions.
Sure.
Specifically at that, because those were the important issues that came out as being desirable to be questioned from the council and the department heads. I certainly understand what Counsel Lazo was saying about situational questioning. I get that. And I tend to agree with him to the extent that I think it creates a dialogue, rather than just hammering a candidate with a question and, you know, bing, 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 bing. I think you establish a dialogue with the candidate, and you get a better interview
I agree.
From the candidate, because you see how the counselor, how the candidate reacts to the questions, how he or she thinks on their feet, and I think it becomes a little less adversarial and not friendly, but just collegial.
Right.
So, you know, in terms of follow-up questions, in terms of situational questions, I think that that's fair. I think that that's very fair. But we need, I think, for the purposes of the law, in terms of fairness toward the candidates, and we need to have a certain level of question that remains the same to start the dialogue going in the particular subject areas that we're looking at. And in terms of situational, if you look at a couple of the questions, you know, I was looking over them again just now as people were talking, and, you know, I look at question number four, for instance, and the second part of the question is a situational question, so I think that would be a good follow-up question to that to begin with, for instance. Question number five is a question that's important... Question number five is a question that's important to all of us, and I think that that's, that is somewhat of a situational question, because we're asking for input from the candidate about what their knowledge is and what the extent of their knowledge is. What have they got for ideas? Because if you look at the positional statement, it's not, there shouldn't be a surprise. The candidates should have done their homework. They should be prepared to answer these questions in terms of what's important to us.
Right.
Number seven was important, and number six, definitely important as well. So I think, I think to start the ball rolling, these questions are pretty good. I think the key is for us to follow up where the candidate takes us. If the candidate starts to take us this way, you know, why did they take us this way? What's the story behind that? And follow up with that kind of a question.
I hear that.
And that's where I think we will see a good interview coming out of the candidates. And if the candidate doesn't do well with that, well, you know, so be it. You know, that's the way it goes.
Right.
Yep.
Who did it? Counsel Lazlo?
To Counselor Daniels, what you said is absolutely correct. Professional first when you ask the questions. But there's a way to get adversarial and professional at the same time, and that's an art. And if you do it properly, sometimes you can tell somebody, go to hell, they look forward to the trip, said correctly. And I've learned that over the years. But we've had some interview questions, I think Mr. Joe Van might have been involved in this one, or I think it was a school committee member, asked the superintendent, if you had to describe yourself as an animal, which animal would you be? I looked at the question, I almost, I was flabbergasted, because the initial question, I thought was foolish. When the person answered it, the type of animal that they thought they were, whether it was a stallion, an eagle, whatever, said something about the personality and the build of the candidate, and it was, I thought, a foolish question. But if you ask the question properly and put it in a situation where it's professional, I'd say we're going to be all right. And I think, Counselor Daniels, if these candidates really are what you say they are, they'll know how to field them, field those questions, and then you'll see the strengths and weaknesses in these candidates. But I am clear tonight, I will not rule out a second round, even if they don't know about it. Because if we turn around, and I'm going to use a sports analogy, I never gave the plays to the defense when I ran the offense in high school. So I wouldn't give all the answers to the candidates without a little challenge. And that might bring two candidates to the top, if we see it, if we see it. And at that point, the AI would be in request, a comeback interview with two. And if it's not written in the process or whatever, and somebody says, I object, I don't want that manager, period. You don't want this job bad enough to go with a minor amendment of your bosses on a process. He doesn't belong here. But again, there's a situation. I don't know if it's going to happen, but a situation like that, you learn more than a boilerplate question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So are we in agreement, these questions are all right? I mean, so was there a particular, Counsel Ryan?
Should we, I'm guessing my question is, should we actually set up what the nine questions are before we leave this day as? Because right now, we have 13, and then Gus brought up two.
Well, I think the first one isn't really a question, it's just an introduction, so I think I would take the introduction and say, welcome candidate X to the Southbridge Town Council.
But if you eliminate that and the last question, you still, you have 11 questions.
11 questions, right.
So that means we, and plus the two that Gus just put up, so that's 13. So we should probably narrow it down to nine, so we know the nine questions we're dealing with before going into tomorrow's interview.
Well, I think you can incorporate collective bargaining into leadership and management style, because that really comes into leadership. I mean, how do you interact with your employees? How about your unions, everybody in place? So I can kind of finesse that into that category. I think that would be a logical place to put that. Or it could be even a follow-up question within leadership and management, because it really is a management style. It's, management is collective bargaining, and we have a bunch of unions. Relationship with other town state entities, very important question, because that's schools, we have to have that. Counsel Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm just asking, I think he may have a suggestion, so.
So my suggestion also would be somewhere around number nine going into number three as well. Leadership and management.
Okay. I'll see if I can finagle all that in there to a question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we going to be assigned questions or?
I'm glad, it's up to you. If you want a question, is there a question you want to ask?
No, I mean, I agree with Counsel Adams. I think that, you know, if you look at, just say Counsel Ryan, you're on school committee and BAP, you're on school committees, it's fair to say you might want to ask questions where your strong point is, which is schools, planning and development. You're a businessman. You were administrator in a high school. I mean, we have different professions, and we have different service to the council, and I think that if somebody picks and skips a question, doesn't ask question one, say, Counsel Adams up, and he asks planning and development one, that's further down, we can cross the question out and follow and leave the questions, whatever's left over is left over, and we'll see where the time runs.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would recommend, again, looking at these numbers, if we can consolidate these numbers down just a little bit, if we can. If we can't, that's fine as well. But I look at these, the bolded areas as categories, and the categories, each counselor take a category and say, you know, whatever it may be. And then if they want to take one of those questions, that, the boilerplate questions, that's fine. If they want to come up with their own question.
Well, you'll have to get it to me, like, because I have to get this, so it's distributed to every council about 5:00 tomorrow.
Right.
So that everybody has the same. So we have it on file.
Well, then, I'll just jump off that, and I'll request that I ask question number 12, or the category 12.
All right.
Since that is my area of expertise. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Adams?
We'll request number three.
Three? Okay, finance? Anybody want to finance?
Mr. Chairman, I would request number seven.
Okay.
I was thinking, with the similar question I was suggesting a few minutes ago, I could probably tie that into finance.
You, finance?
Well, I was thinking, because what I was thinking about, how would we create a system to fund that? And that's really ultimately a financial question, I suppose, so. I could do that one.
Do you want to get that information to me?
Oh.
Okay. Do you want to ask that question as well?
Yeah.
Okay. We got a couple more here?
I'm not going to ask for another one. I'm just going to ask that, even though I'm asking for number three, I'd probably ask question number nine.
Within that?
Within that, yeah.
Okay. Counsel Lazlo, any particular one?
Give me whichever one you want to give me. There isn't one that I can't cover.
The relationship with the town manager and the town council?
That's fine.
I mean, that's up to you. I mean, we have economic development left, solid waste, and citizen relationship and transparency.
Did anybody take leadership management's time?
Yeah, that's Counsel Adams.
And relationship between?
Manager and council?
Yeah.
You want that?
Yep.
You go with that one?
Yep.
Okay. Counsel Dow? Number six? Okay. Counsel Marquetti?
I don't really have any preference.
You have econo, no, you have collective bargaining is going to go into leadership and management as well, right? So eight and nine are going into leadership and management as well. Okay. So we have alternative revenues and grants, and citizen relations and transparency. I'll pick one for you? All right. I'll give you number 11. And I think that would leave the property tax one for you, Counsel Daniel? The number five, alternative revenues and grants.
Sure.
Okay.
Who's got number four?
Number four is Counsel Steve's. Okay? Are we good? I'm looking forward to a discussion, and participate in town searches as others have. You'll get a sense as to, those that haven't, you'll get a sense as to the candidates and where you're going to go from there anyway, so. All right. So we'll work on making sure everything's all set and get this to you as soon as possible tomorrow. Again, we start promptly at 5:00 tomorrow. What's that? Any questions on this? All right. Moving on to Agenda 21. Vote to ratify the contract with McClure Engineering Incorporated for $9,500 from project number 63810, replacement of Dresser Street retaining well for the engineering construction oversight services of the wall on Franklin Terrace being constructed by UEL Contractors.
Second. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think we're all familiar with this particular project. I'm going to have the Assistant DPW Director get more specific into it. Obviously, if you read the agenda, this is about observation work. The DPW is running the project, but they don't have the ability to be there on a daily basis, and they would like to make sure that there's appropriate staff, to make sure the project is, the material and everything is put down the way it's supposed to, so there needs to be some of the observation. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant DPW Director.
Last week, UEL Contractors started construction on the retaining wall replacement on Franklin Terrace. So far, the only parts, obviously, so this contract is a little bit late, we, I would have liked to get it, get it approved a couple of weeks earlier, but the only thing that they were going to do that is out of their scope now was take a bunch of pictures of the site beforehand. And I went out there and did that in five minutes while I was handing out flyers to let everyone know. So we're, Heather and I are both technically capable of doing this work, but this is just a really efficient, easy, discreet way to lighten our load a little, so we can do some other work, get some other bids out. And frankly, at $85 an hour, it's a steal. We couldn't hire anybody to do the stuff that I'm going to do instead of doing, going out and doing this work. This work is just observing all the critical parts of construction, rebar, form work for the concrete wall, pavement going down, backfilling of excavation, compaction, things that we don't want to be out there constantly doing. And so we can just put that off on this, on McClure Engineering. Any questions?
Counsel Lazlo?
I just want to comment, this is a field I'm in. It's nice to see you hire a local person from, you know, surrounding towns that worry about their reputation and that is well qualified to handle this job. McClure Engineering, their reputation speaks for itself. I do not think we will be having the same problems we had on Central Street parking lot under tutelage of McClure Engineering. So I think it's a good call. I know it's a few dollars, but again, when you look at what you're paying and what you're going to get, I think it's a good, a good price for the coverage we're going to have. Thank you.
Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, possibly Matt can answer this question. Couple of quick questions. Did I hear you correctly to say that we don't have the time and the knowledge within the department to manage this project?
We have the knowledge, we do not have the time. We put 100 hours, as you can see, 100 hours, two and a half weeks. In that time, I have to, I'll have to block out time in, to coordinate with the contractor's schedule, and instead, I could be getting out a pavement bid, which is something that we're going to be working on now that some funding has been secured. We can, I can be putting out other bids, doing other work that never stops, permitting, licensing, and stuff like that.
You all set, Counsel?
For now, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so you mentioned, it mentions 100 hours, so just clarify, are they doing it 100 hours straight through? Are we expecting this project to be done in two and a half hour, two and a half weeks? Because I know that projects already actually started, so are they already on site?
The contractor only intends to be out on site for about six weeks. So this is going to be a quick job, and this just, I think 100 hours more than covers them. They're only going to be billing us for what they actually, what they actually work on the project. But their burden on their, with their scope of work, isn't expected to go any more than 100 hours with a six-week construction project. They're not going to be out there every day, only when critical construction items are taking place.
Any further discussion?
Really quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up, I feel strongly that, I believe we should be handling this project in-house. If we have the capabilities and we have the knowledge, we should find the time to start taking these things in-house and managing these projects ourselves. The town is struggling now financially. We can't, I can't personally support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to reiterate that, that the cost that we're getting this at, the work that I will be doing instead, would be far more expensive. Putting out bids for asphalt, for paving work and stuff, actually designing projects, that's what I'm going to be doing when I'm in the office, instead of going out into the field. And it's, in terms of financial sense, I think it makes perfect sense to do this.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazlo?
Not to prolong the project, this wall job, but just, you can sense the frustration from some counselors of things not getting done. And we experienced the Central Street parking lot, which we've had some issues. This council and councils before this have put a tremendous amount of money into accounts for projects to be done, and we're constantly told that we don't have the time to get these things done. But we're looking around and saying, well, okay, if they're not getting done, what is getting done? I share the frustration of Counsel Katrona and some others, but I'm sticking with what I'm saying about the McClure deal. This is a short job, small job. This is where you want to put an engineer, and you want to put him on something much larger where you could save a lot more money, and I get what you're saying. But I want you to leave here today, when you go back, that council is frustrated. I don't want to speak for everybody, but off we talk, and it's frustrating. We want to back you up. We want to give you all the money, pave all the roads, fix all the sidewalks. Town manager wants to do it, everybody wants to do the right thing. But if it doesn't get done, everything falls downhill, and it ends up in your office. So I support this, but there's a big issue, and we have to work on it together, and we have to move forward on trying to get things done in Southbridge, mainly roads, infrastructure and stuff like that. But frustration's here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Katrona opposed. Motion carries. Item 22, vote to ratify the contract with Reno HVAC and Controls for $29,225 for the HVAC system and control maintenance of town buildings for fiscal year '21 from various building maintenance accounts with a two, with a year two and three optional renewal. Is there a motion?
To move.
Second. Discussion. Town manager?
Again, I'm going to refer just to Matt, he's been working on this item. I think it'll be much better presented information.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The last couple of three-year terms, this contract's been held by MPC Services. Last three-year term, they were the only bidder. Their price is slightly higher this year, and Reno came out just below them, about 10% below them. I looked into their references, lots of towns and similar institutions to us that are very happy with their performance. very happy with their performance, and I'm excited to, after talking to them a bit, to get started with them.
Any further discussion? Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, through you, to Matt. Matt, does the DPW have an HVAC technician on staff?
No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
No.
We do not. Does the DPW department perform any preventive maintenance on any of this equipment?
Only replacement of filters, or building craftsmen does some of that.
So as they go through their PMs, do they take a look at belts and not just filters and coils?
Yes.
Okay. So what exactly are we paying this service to do?
I'm not sure I have the scope of work here exactly, but as you alluded to, it's belts and filters, it's making sure all the equipment, all the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment is serviceable. It calls to attention problems that we wouldn't be aware of otherwise, lubricants, whatever. I'm not a HVAC tech, so I don't know all the specifics of preventative maintenance, but the list of things, tasks that they're required to perform are available. It was in the scope of work for the bid, I just don't have it here in front of me to list off.
Thank you. I did see some of what they do. Just my opinion, the only process that we would need an HVAC technician for, or to sub this work out, would be if we had to add refrigerant, or we had to adjust refrigerant. Pretty much everything else could be, should be handled, in my opinion, in-house. If you are a tech, should be able to check belts, should be able to change filters while you're up there, clean coils. If you notice a problem, then certainly call in a contractor. Again, I can't justify spending nearly $30,000 just to have somebody come in and do a PM.
We don't have an HVAC tech.
I respect that. You don't need an HVAC tech to check filters, to change belts, to clean coils.
I respectfully disagree with that.
Thank you.
Somebody that's not an HVAC tech is not going to be, not going to recognize problems the same way that an HVAC tech is, and we'd be exposing ourselves to much larger problems.
Thank you.
Councilor Lazo?
Matt, have you looked into using the school department's HVAC gentleman?
We have.
I know we use the electrician from time to time on the town side for various things, and I thought that the HVAC guy came in and did some town hall work. Is there any way we could tap into that a little bit?
We do. We do as much as, we do as much as we can. We use, Mark has been great, he's been an enormous help, he's saved us a ton of money, but we can only ask him to do so much. He has, he has school, he has Mike to direct his work on a normal basis, and we can't ask everything of him.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, just to fall back on it. An HVAC gentleman, I don't know what he gets paid, but when you're on the council and you're spending $30,000, and if you need servicing in town hall, all of a sudden hiring an HVAC person under your roof might be something you want to look into. $30,000, just this one specific area. If there's other areas, we have other buildings, maybe we should be looking into that in the upcoming budget session. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I would recommend that, I know this year we had talked about looking at the DPW's roles and staffing and issues that we had, and obviously, this virus kicked in a little bit, and some other things did not apply for this year that we wanted to get done. But I would say whoever the DPW chair is for this coming year, take a hard look at what they have, and bring in some recommendations based on all the studies that we've done, all the stuff that's been sitting there holding up the doors, holding the doors open. So I would highly recommend that, and actually having a serious conversation, because I can understand the frustration of the Councilor Katrona on these issues. And I think if they don't have time, they don't have time, they don't have the personnel, they don't have the personnel. So we actually, as the councilors, responsible for taking a look at that and actually making recommendations, hopefully alleviate some of that stress on them, and prepare this town for its future needs when it comes to facilities and a few other things. So that's all I have, I know it's off the topic, my apologies.
No, it's within the topic, I know we've talked about it.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, I'm going to urge councils to vote for this today, because it's going to take, I agree with you, it's going to take time, and the DPW Subcommittee can work on this. But from now till 2001, we need this. I mean, if the system goes down, you're going to pay a lot more than $30,000. So I say we pass this, and DPW Subcommittee get on the horse with Heather and this gentleman here, and look at it. $30,000, if that's a position, you know, you can couple it up with a dual license, because a lot of them do have dual licenses, it might be feasible.
Thank you, Councilor, and I just wanted to review the invitation to bid. It is clearly written in the bid spec. This bid is for a one-year contract with the option to extend for a second, third year at the town's discretion. So it would be up to us to get it to that Subcommittee and review those things that we've talked about, the merger of departments and having electricians and all that. So it would give us the time, as Councilor Lazo said, and it's at the town's discretion, so.
And we could monitor the finances on this account. If it goes over or under, we'll have a better idea when we look into it.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Council Katrona opposed. Thank you, Matt. Council's forum. We'll start this evening with the newly installed councilors, so we'll go Council Ryan.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank the voters for giving me the opportunity to be here. I'm really excited to work with all of you, and the chairman, and the manager, and whoever we select as the new manager, and I look forward to a very productive three years. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Council Dow?
Our thanks to everybody who came out and voted this election, and vote for me especially, and trust me, hopefully I can.
You guys get closer to the mic, because.
Hopefully I can make some change, and it'll be a better source of it from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. As you see, normally, you can make sure you get close, because you have that table behind the dais, and the reason, I should have mentioned that earlier, is that was put in by the Director of Inspection so that we could make the swing to make sure that we had the six-foot distances. So that's why we have that extra table in between, so just make sure the microphone is close enough to you, so you can hear, because it's harder for councilors out here. I think Cable did a good job to get it out here in the audience, so you can hear it, but thank you. Council Steves, newly re-elected?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to say publicly, thank you, welcome to Council Ryan and Council Dow. It's nice to see you guys up here on the dais and see how, see how we all work together, it'd be interesting. And the thing, the only thing I want to point out is that I came across an email a couple days ago, well, actually, sometimes afternoon, actually, about the fact that people need to consider that the state DEP raised our drought level to significant, which is level two of four in central Mass, which means that they're limiting outdoor watering to handheld hoses or cans, and only before 9:00 AM or after 5:00 PM. So, I mean, farmers can get exemptions. And that was obviously, that came out on July 20, I'm sorry, June 24th, which was before the most recent rain, but the water levels are still really low. I know when I go out hiking in the woods, like on Lebanon Brook, it's still, it looks like it's August as far as the water levels go. So we really need to make sure that we get out, get out there and do whatever we can do to save our water supply. We're in a very lucky position because we have the reservoirs, as opposed to being like some towns that are well-based, but still, it's a limited resource. So please, if you're out there and you're watching this, please don't like, just water your grass just for the sake of watering grass, because grass, quite frankly, is useless. But anyway, so just wanted to mention that. That's all I had, thanks.
Thank you. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, welcome the new councilors, welcome aboard. It's great to see you, great to be back in this session again. A few things that I'd just like to talk to tonight. One is, and I think, hopefully we can bring this on board with Subcommittee's now starting to discuss again topics. Small businesses in having equal, equal chances, they're out there, they're struggling. I know I've had two concerns brought to me, one was an ice cream, a gentleman wanted to open an ice cream place, and another from a resident that was building a deck. The resident building a deck has waited almost two and a half months for the same documents that he's called several times. I have his emails also, so I think that's something we should take a look at. But the small businesses in this town are struggling, and again, my opinion, I don't think we need to go out and not single them out every day, but to try and work with them, rather than be adversarial. There's a lot of businesses in this town that want to survive, and some that may not because of COVID. I just think that if we're looking at the small businesses, we also have industry in this town, and if we're going to take a look at the small business, we should be looking at the big industry in this town, and the big businesses as well. So hopefully, we can bring this through Subcommittee and speak further.
Nothing more this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you. Council Lazo? Yeah, Council Lazo?
I got a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to have an open apology to my fellow councilors that I served with in this past year, and I also would like to apologize to the registered voters for my attendance in the last three months. It has been a trying time for myself. COVID-19 knocked the hell out of my businesses, especially Lazo's Cafe. And now I'm back, and I will bring a voice to this council, as I've done so many times before, but I think it's only the right thing to do is to apologize to my fellow councilors that picked up the slack while I was away. When you get your left arm cut off because of a pandemic, you work twice as hard with your other business, which is your right hand, and you survive, and you hope that the community or the town becomes business-friendly to the smaller businesses, and not just cater to the large ones. So I'd like to apologize, and councilors, I thank you for picking up the slack, especially the chairman and vice chairman. And to the voters, I owe you, and I will put in double time in the upcoming year and bring a lot of different ideas, and not so much taxation, hopefully, but we will talk about that later, and I just wanted to have an open apology for my attendance. It couldn't be helped due to the COVID-19, we have to deal with our personal lives first, and our public service first, service second. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Jackie Ryan, Gus Steves. You've been in government, but welcome to the council and welcome back. And to my good friend, The Virgin, who's never been in politics, a very successful businessman, Joe Dow, looking forward to working with you, Joe. Thirdly, congratulations, Mr. Jovan, as the chairman and vice chairman Daniels. I know there was much discussion on who's going to be the chairman and vice chairman. It is only natural to maintain the skipper's, the captain of the ship, so to speak, during a transformation of a new town manager and a new council moving forward. I think the council's made the right decision tonight, and I think that we can all work together for a better outcome and a proper appointment of the new town manager. Finally, we can't always be so positive in such a trying time. I feel bad we lost our high school principal again. I don't know what number it is, I'm five or six, four, I don't know, but the state receivership continues on its way, and with the outcomes that we've been getting in the last four years have not been good. And in closing, in my absence in the last three months, there was another virus I call tax-and-spend virus, and I think it went rampant around the council in the last three months. So with the COVID-19, and all of the revenues that are going to be falling off in the state of Massachusetts due to the lack of operation of business, I think we have to rebuild and be a little more cautious. If I may, pay a kudo to the town manager was more cautious than the council, which is very rare. And I think that moving forward, we're going to pick up the agenda and work within the means of the town. But when the elderly that still live in their homes come to me and they say, "You're taxing us out of our home," I have to at least tonight say, "We need to get a better grip on that end of our duties." And I know we, when in doubt, go to the tax rate. That's not been my philosophy, but I have to push forward and try and convince members to maybe take a different avenue. That's why I put that placate up, "The buck stops here," and it does, it's the council's responsibility. We have the final say on the tax rate. And good luck to all the councilors this year, looking forward to working with each and every one of you in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lazo. And one response, because I just, I don't want to leave it out there. This council took every recommendation that the town manager made to it, and it was the town council that requested reductions in spending to stabilization. That was forced by the hand of the council that was sitting. Not the town manager's recommendation, can sit here and say it was his recommendation, but that was pushed forward by these councilors here. So I respect the town manager for the budget put forward, but a lot of that was driven by the councils that sat during those budget meetings. So I respectfully disagree with the assertion that it was the town manager that did a better job than the town council, respectfully, because I sat in on every single town council budget hearing. So I just want to respectfully, because I'm not going to leave that out to the public, that this council was irresponsible. I do take that personally, because it was his recommendations that he brought, and the recommendations the council is to cut. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate the new councilors again. I want to congratulate Councilor Daniel and Council Jovan, vice chair and chair once again. I look forward to working with all you again this year. I want to also thank all the individuals that set this up and worked overtime to get this place set up. I will say one thing, is this town has moved forward pretty quickly as far as getting the place open, with a lot of push and a lot of agreements. The town has moved in the right direction when it came to COVID, very well prepared, and at the same time, still very well prepared, even as the town hall and other entities within the town open up slowly and in the right direction. And lastly, I received the numbers for the COVID for the town of Southbridge, 156 cases. We have eight deaths as the last count, and 129 that are recovered, and 19 that are in quarantine or still active. So numbers look kind of familiar from what we had last week that I received today. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Council Dan?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Council McCarty, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Council McCarty, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to say that Councilor Lazo never apologizes is a sign of weakness. I think that, you know, you had to do what you had to do, keep your business going. I had a lot of residents who have called me recently. One resident's been complaining about speeding on Everett Street. I did mention it to the police chief and the town manager. I just want to, I just want to make sure that something is done on Everett Street. If you need a larger sign, I took a ride there today, the speeding sign that they have isn't working, so I would appreciate if something could be done there, because I think this, this person has come to the town council before, back in 2017, and said something about speeding on Everett Street. It's not a good street to be, or any street to be speeding on. I also had a lot of residents complaining about the fireworks in town. I know we've had a lot of emails about it, some of it was just unbelievable, out of control, very loud. Someone said there was some fireworks going on up at the landfill too, and I don't think the landfill is a good place for fireworks, considering all the methane gas up there, so. I also had a resident call me and was concerned about public safety personnel, police, fire, who are injured on the job in the line of duty, and then they lose their health care. I just would like to know if maybe we could have a conversation about that going forward, not quite sure what Subcommittee would take it up, if we'll be planning into PPP or general government. It's just something that I think that we should at least have a conversation about it going forward. And finally, Mr. Town Manager, I would just like to wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. I know you and I, we didn't always get along, we didn't agree on everything, but I thought you were a pretty decent guy, and I think wherever you go, wherever you'll end up, I think you'll do a. wherever you'll end up, I think you'll do a really good job. And I wish you the best of luck. And congratulations to the other councilors for winning. And I wish you the best of luck. And, and you too, Gus, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to welcome Councils Dow and Ryan to the dais here. I hope that they have short-sleeved shirts and shorts to wear on these hot July and August days. They're going to learn that it gets real warm up here real fast. And not just because of the lights and the temperature there. I'd like to thank my fellow councilors for their support in electing me as vice chair of the town council. I appreciate it. I intend to continue working hard for you. And I hope that you see my efforts as you, as the year passes. That's all I have. The next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, July 20th, 2020. At this point, I believe it's here in council chambers.
Yes.
You know, barring something unforeseen. Thank you.
Thank you. And remind you tomorrow evening promptly, we start at 5:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, if a citizen wants to come to the meeting, are they allowed to?
No. They can participate remotely.
Okay.
Through remote participation. That was what I stated earlier at the meeting when I read off that open meeting.
I just, I just saw the chairs and I didn't know six feet apart if that was.
So according to the Director of Inspections, based on the square footage of this room, originally the email, first email I got was that they could allow 20 people in the audience. Then it dropped down to eight based on the governor's square footage. So the public body can meet in public. We have to have a mechanism for the public to watch or participate in real time by us setting up this system the way I have it set up. And that's why I have this set up the way it is, that anybody that wishes to participate remotely can log on and participate remotely either by that or calling into the number that we have, the telephone number that I read off.
No, I, I.
So there may no public allowed into the building going forward because we can't, because of the limitations on number of people that can gather in a public place, we don't know if we could have one person or 50, depending on the topic that we have that evening and based on the recommendation of, of the Director of Inspections and the guidance that I have.
Hey, to the point of the Director of Inspections, if you have a tape and you measure six-foot squares like everybody does in their businesses that had been forced upon us, maybe you could add some people in here. You don't calculate it by the square footage of the building. You calculate it by the distance of the people. Thank you.
Well, it's actually the percentage of the square footage that allows so many people in. And we count, according to him, we count, every one of us counts as towards that number of people allowed in the entire square footage of this room.
If that were correct, that building inspector, she had fired because every business would be shut down in Southbridge. Thank you.
That was the email he gave to me. So.
It's a waste of.
However, we could not, with all due respect, we could not have 50 people in here though. And therefore, we cannot limit the number of people that, if we open, if we open the, if we open the doors to allow anybody to come in, you can't then shut it off based on the square footage. So. Council Steve's?
Actually, I just wanted to think of the whole issue.
I can't hear you.
The whole issue of, of having citizens access, it just occurred to me, looking at the screen, I was wondering if we could make it simpler since you did read the number, but chances are somebody's not going to remember it an hour and a half later if they actually have a question. Why don't we actually have a little, a piece of papers like literally right beside your head that has the access number right on it so that anybody's watching it, if they have a question, they can call us directly. They can call it in so they see it right there.
I try to make it as.
Just for.
To be able to have as many people that participate as we possibly can. We've done everything in my power to make sure that we are transparent.
I know.
And open as possible.
I'm just saying that maybe if we did that, they'd see it.
And I can only go by the guidance of the people that get paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in this town hall to give us the guidance. I've done my best to make sure that we can act appropriately.
I'm not saying you aren't.
No, no, I'm not. I'm just.
If we stuck it up there, they'd see it.
For the people that question why we do things. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Your name is all present.